Okay. Called to order this session of the Atwater City Council for October 23rd, 2017. If you please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by invocation by Chaplain Mead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for allowing us to gather again in this halls to do the business at Atwater. Father, we do ask that you watch over each and every one here, Father, that all things will be done decently. We know, Father, that all of here are striving for the greatness of the city, Father. We all have the same goals, Father. We also know that there are many different ways to those goals. We ask that you help everyone to communicate and help those that are here from the great city to support the councilmen and women, Father, and just watch over those that need to make decisions. We also ask that you watch over our public safety, our police and fire, that you'll keep them safe, Father, to do what they need to continue making decisions. Thank you, and in the name of Christ Jesus.
Aiden. Roll call, please. Creighton?
Here.
Raymond?
Here.
Vera?
Here.
Vineyard?
Present.
Price?
Here.
We have a quorum. Mayor or City Attorney report out from closed session.
Mr. Terpster, please.
Well, the report out, Mr. Mayor, members of the councils, that we're not done. And so, the council will be gathering after this meeting to continue the closed session, and I will be reporting out of the closed session at that time.
We have no subsequent needed items, and so, we move to approval of agenda as posted or as amended.
Are there any items on the agenda this evening that any council member would like to amend or add, delete? Hearing none, entertaining more?
I apologize.
Oh, yes.
I needed, if we could, to re-agendize item 14 as the continuation of the appeal hearing on that item until the next meeting. There won't be an update from the attorney on that at this time.
Removing number 14 from... Okay, I'll make that motion. Second. And we apologize, we need to re-agendize this, and we'll bring it back for our next council meeting, for those that are here tonight for that matter. Okay, so, with that in mind, with the deletion of item number 14, call for the question. Vineyard?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Comments from the public. At this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. Please state your name and address for the record. Action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. To comment on an item that is on the agenda, please wait until the item is read for consideration. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. And normally, we don't read this, but I am going to read it tonight. Civility is expected from members of the public during the meeting. For more efficient use of time, disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. While you may not agree with what an individual is saying, please treat everyone with courtesy and respect.
Are there any members of the audience this evening that would like to address the City Council? Please come to the podium and state your name for the record. And please turn off your cellphone.
I am so sorry, everybody.
Throw it against the wall. Thank you.
Michael Noguera, 1177 Vine Street, Atwater, California. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Martin Luther King wrote in his letter from Birmingham Jail after having been arrested for demonstrating against injustice. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We are caught in an inescapable network of mutuality tied in a single garment of destiny, whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly. I'm here to say that I'm standing against what I believe to be an unjust action taken against a fellow resident of my city. This man was stopped from speaking. What dangerous precedence this sets. If I were to speak of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, would I be stopped? And what if another resident speaks in favor of gun control? Would they be stopped? Or if another were to speak on another issue that City Council disagrees with, would they be stopped? I'm going to quote something, and I'm sure many will know it. "Congress or government shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the right of the people to peaceably assemble, and to petition the government for redress of grievances." If you guessed that that quote comes from the United States Constitution, you would be right. If you guessed more specifically that that came from the First Amendment, you would also be right. What I saw happen during that incident, and what I believe, is that such action that was taken by my local government was in direct conflict with what that quote says. The Constitution has the Big Ten, that is, the Bill of Rights, the first 10 amendments. And the freedom of speech and the petition government for redress of grievances is literally the very first amendment that our founders placed in the Bill of Rights. Let me repeat that, the very first amendment. Those who want our independence believe that freedom to think as you will and speak as you think are means indispensable to discovery and spread of political truth. With this comes discourse and free criticism of the government, along with speech of little or no value. Heated debate, colorful testimonies and criticism should be anticipated and welcomed during the portion of public comment. Most would agree that thin skin is not a requirement in government. Justice Holmes wrote in Abrams versus United States that the hallmark of the protection of free speech is to allow free trade of ideas, in ideas, even ideas that the overwhelming majority of people might find distasteful or discomforting. Justice Felix Frankfurter stated in Bump Garner versus U.S., "One of the prerogatives of American citizenship is the right to criticize public men in measures." And that meant not only informed and responsible criticism, but the freedom to speak foolishly and without moderation. Justice Harlan wrote in the majority of Cohen versus California, "When it overturned the conviction of a draft protester for breach of the peace for wearing a jacket that said 'F the draft,' Justin Harlan wrote, 'Surely the state has no right to cleanse public debate to the point where it's grammatically palatable to the most squeamish among us. For while the particular four-letter word being litigated here is perhaps the most distasteful than most others of its genre, it is nevertheless often true that one man's vulgarity is another's lyrics.'" Looking to our founding documents, we see the principle of giving ruling power to the governed and not a government is what set our country apart from its beginning. Important proclamations were made in the second paragraph of the Declaration of Independence. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator, not government, with certain unillable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. The concept that our rights do not come from any man or government, but from Almighty God, has been America's defining quality. Gail Group points out in U.S. History and Context that in Garrison versus Louisiana in 1964, the Supreme Court explained that speech is more than self-expression, is the essence of government. James Madison, author of the First Amendment, had a similar expression of thought in a speech in 1794. He stated, "If we advert to the nature of republican government, we shall find that the censorial power is in the people over the government and not in the government over the people." May we not forget that the people are the ultimate authority, while the public officers are our servants. They are not, they are our agents. May God be with us all. God bless you all. God bless Atwater, and God bless America.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council?
Yadi Hernandez, 1904 Canal. What this gentleman here was just addressing back in 2016, when our Apple City Council, that gentleman that was here that created all this disruption, I went to talk to him. At this stage, I don't really know what the city can do to curtail the behavior that is displayed here last council meeting. The only thing I can say, in my opinion, I don't care how much of the Constitution you bring up, you don't have any right to insult people here in this meeting, as it was last week. And I think most of us here read the paper, or at least read about it, or hear about it. That same gentleman got arrested this last week, if I'm not mistaken, for growing marijuana. I say, you know what? I don't know what this young fella here was talking about as far as the Constitution. But give it down here to the level of the people that are busting their behind to get things done and get addressed like the way he did, it's not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council?
Eric Lee, 1199 Atwater Boulevard, Mayor, Council. What I want to address tonight are the green boxes spread around the city of Atwater, and also, the shipping container that's converted to a drop-off point for recyclables or donations or whatever across from Walmart. I believe the CDRC and the council has come together to work on a format where you will be putting stickers on the green boxes or require that, so you know who puts them out, and how to get in touch with them, and where they are allocated around the city. But I don't believe that you have done that for the large container that is in front of the Walmart shopping center. While at Applebee's, more than once, I've noticed a couple that pull up in a van around 11:30, and I don't know how he gets inside this thing, but he seems to crawl in, because I see his feet sticking out. And they're pulling out all kinds of clothing and stuff that people have donated. They put in their van what they want, they throw the rest on the ground. I called the PD on this. The problem is, is normal, about the time that they get there, these people leave, because it is not a high priority, and I understand that. But the problem is, they're making a huge mess over there. And I just, I want to find out how that was approved, that they could place that there, number one. Number two, did they comply with any sign ordinances to the CDRC? It appears like their sign is not one that complies. I would like to see that been come under the same rules and regulations as the small green ones, because I think it's creating a real issue over there. And I've tried to call that number, as I think most people probably have, and you don't get anywhere with that. I've gone online, you don't get anywhere with that either. I don't get any responses back. I understand what's going on, but I've also come to the realization that the same silver van coming there almost every day at around the same time, between 11:30 and 12:30, is obviously picking up things for something other than their own personal use. And I've kind of been looking around with code enforcement to see if that van might be showing up at some of the garage sales around town. Because I think what they're doing is they're pulling stuff out of there, and then they're selling it, which is not the only time that's been done around here, I'm sure. But anyway, if anybody can come up with an answer for that, I would certainly appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Frank Johnson, 608 13th Street, Modesto, California. I've come before the council a few years, or a year plus, spoke to the mayor, past police chief, city manager, Petro, about the lack of diversity within the police department. I understand that there was four officers hired, three Caucasians, and one Hispanic. If you look at the departments around, it shows a reflection of their community. Nepotism exists. It's an understatement. District elections. District elections.
I'll give you another 15 seconds. Go ahead. Go ahead.
It's vital in representation in the diversity that I'm talking about, where each community is represented by leadership on the diocese. Whatever the problem is, it's been a long time since I brought district elections to the council, even spoke in private about district elections. A lot of agencies are looking at lawsuits. We filed numerous complaints that have not been answered. We even paid to have the response to a government Freedom of Information Act returned. Time is not important. The interruptions are. I'll come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Can we take about 10 seconds, and everybody make sure your cell phone is on silent, please? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Okay. Seeing none, move on. Consent calendar.
Consent calendar. Notice to the public, background information has been provided on all matters listed under the consent calendar. These items are considered to be routine. All items under the consent calendar are normally approved by one motion. If discussion is requested on any item, that item will be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. And I will mention that item number 11 does show on the consent calendar, however, it is not on the consent calendar according to us, so that will have to be discussed.
Okay. Okay. Are there any items on the consent calendar that council members would like to remove for separate consideration? Mr. Vineyard?
Item number nine, please.
Number nine. Any others? Okay. Are there any members of the audience that wish to remove any items on the consent calendar for separate consideration? Okay. Entertainer motion for the remainder?
Motion to approve the consent calendar as amended.
Second. Okay. Call for the question.
Vera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number nine, ordinances waiving the second reading and adoption, waiving the second reading and adoption ordinance number CS 982, amending the City of Atwater Municipal Code Title VIII, Chapter VIII dot six zero, Medical Marijuana, Title XVII, Chapter XVII dot zero six, to address commercial marijuana operations in the context of crop cultivation and industry, industrial operation, and Title XVII, Chapter XVII dot seven five of the city's development code to add a new section, Section XVII dot seven five dot one two zero pertaining to the standards for commercial marijuana operations.
Mr. Vineyard?
Yeah, I have a question because in reading this, according to our city minutes from the last meeting, our city minutes state, "By consensus, the city council proposed several changes to the draft ordinance and unanimously agreed in regard to the youth education fee, the use of the word 'may' is necessary to allow greater flexibility." However, if you look under, under page 31, Section Four of item nine, the word 'may' is struck out, and the word 'shall' has been put back in. So I'm just kind of confused by that.
Give a moment for Mr. Terpster to get to that point.
What's the page, Jim?
Page 31, 31, of the item nine.
Of the item.
And it's Section Four, very bottom of the page.
They may find it.
About that, the last meeting. John, did we strike through that?
Well, I remember the discussion going back and forth, and I think what happened is Stacy and I put down 'shall' and not 'may.' And I think, and...
The council's intent was 'may,' wasn't it?
It was.
Because to give us the flexibility.
That's right. It would be 'may' in an amount to be determined by the council.
Correct.
Good catch.
So if we could change that back to 'may' versus 'shall,' then I can move to approve.
Okay. I'll second that. Any other comments? Off the question.
Creighton?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving to item number 11. Find it. Item number 11, informational items only, police volunteer activities for the month of September 2017.
Mr. Vineyard?
Do you really need a summary on that? I just want to bring people's attention. The volunteers do a tremendous amount of footwork, patrol for the police department, and I know the police department appreciates it. I do want to bring the attention that we've done about 650 house checks for the year, run paperwork to Merced at least 186 times, which saves them a considerable amount of time. The main thorn I have, just so everyone knows, is we've done 1,168 sign removals, most of these being garage sales from street poles and everything else. So there's something we need to address, possibly reinstate the permit for signs and stuff, but I just wanted to bring that out, that we spend a lot of time doing that every week, not just on the third and last weekend of the month, but it's every week. Anyway, I want to thank the volunteers for their work.
The next item is petitions and communications, Valley Christian Chapel.
Are there any representatives here tonight from Valley Christian Chapel?
The hallway.
Is he coming?
I think so.
Valley Christian Chapel?
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, we have a request from, obviously, Valley to Christian Chapel to conduct a harvest festival. They've requested that we close Third Street between Broadway and Cedar on October 31st of this year, between the hours of 5:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And at this point, they do have insurance, and I believe that we took this, yes, we had this at the last CDRC meeting, so everything is in order at this point in time.
Motion to approve?
And no one has any other comments to this matter, correct?
We normally, excuse me, we normally put out, Brian's not here, I believe, barricades for that. So we just want to make sure we still do that.
So no impacts, Chief Joseph, correct? Okay.
Thank you.
Call for the question.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Funding and budget matters, treasurer's report for the month of September 2017.
Mr. Heller.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you is the treasury report for September. I might add, today, the bond payment for the 2008, the interest was paid of $420,419.39, and the 2017 wastewater bond payment interest of $434,809.28.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Heller? Mr. Vineyard?
Yeah, I don't have any comments or questions, actually. I just want to, we weren't able to have the finance meeting today due to our closed-door session, so I've asked the city manager that we put it on for the first Monday of November at 4 o'clock in this room.
The first Monday or the first meeting?
First council meeting.
Okay, so we'll have it on the 13th.
13th, I'm sorry, the 13th, yes. On the 13th, yes.
Motion to approve?
Okay.
Second.
Did you second?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. You get off easy tonight, Mr. Heller. Call for the question.
Creighton?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving to ordinances and resolution, waiving the second reading and adopting ordinance number CS 989, amending Chapter II dot one zero, municipal, or general municipal elections of Title II, administration and personnel of the Atwater Municipal Code to transition from an at-large election system to a district-based system for city council members.
Mr. Bramble?
Mr. Mayor and Council, before you is a request by Councilmember Creighton to reconsider this item. I will indicate that Section D of the ordinance now reflects, and did, well, we amended it last time, that reflects that districts three and four will have council elections in 2018, as will the mayor's position, and then districts one and two will be in the 2020 election. So at this point in time, I believe that our ordinance is appropriately amended, and it's ready for your reconsideration.
Okay. Are there any other comments to this particular item from any member of the council? Anyone from the audience have any? Ms. Vera?
So it's the orange map that we're staying with, correct?
That's correct.
And is that outlined in there anywhere, what map we utilize?
It will be included by the consultant in the document, and then will be, it won't actually be in the municipal code, but it will be sent to the county clerk.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, did you have a comment that you wanted to make? Please.
Sorry, Mr. Johnson.
You're good. Well, come to the podium, we'll wait on you, it's all right.
When will the public, or has the public seen the map?
On the wall.
Okay. Did we have input?
Yes, we had a district election briefing at a town hall, and we also had it here when we had three different maps for the public to view, and this was the one that was decided upon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you use a motion as that?
Yes. And no other comments? Call for the question.
Raymond?
No.
Creighton?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. Public hearings, amending the building permit fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is a request that's based on the development of the budget. As we developed the budget, we realized that we were not able to cover the cost of our building inspection division, including the consultants that we hire for the issuing, processing, and conducting of inspections and permit review. So at this point, we have two options, one for 100% coverage of the cost of both staff as well as the consultant, and then we do have an option, if you choose to do so, of covering 100% of the cost of the staff, but only 50% of the contract costs. At this point, we would recommend that you cover 100% of the contract cost as well as the staff costs, because the contract costs are substantially more than staff. That, I'm going to stop and let Mark Paredes give you an overview of what he has worked on pretty diligently for the last couple of months.
Yeah, this all stems back to 2007, when we first had our matrix consultant group do a full valuation of the building staff from top to bottom, what it costs, everything out the door in order to provide service. One of the things that was also included in the initial development of those fees was contracted staff. Eventually, through different decisions and stuff like that, it was taken out. So we used to have contracted staff within our fees, but then it was removed. We're just asking for it to be put back in, and that we can get 100% recovery. We, the city, lost about $104,000 last year with contracted services, which is a very substantial number. Granted, we're extremely busy that year, so we were able to absorb those costs. But, so we would like to be able to provide service, and just what comes in and comes out, it would just zero out across the board, especially in our economic situation we're in.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Paredes? Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. At this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Allow anyone to come forward, state your name and your testimony to this matter. Anyone? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Entertainer motion. Ms. Vera?
So are we, we have two options, 100% full staff and recovery, and 50% contract recovery? Do we need to make a decision between the two, or can you explain that to me, please?
Well, it would be council's direction as to which one you would prefer to have, and as I indicated, the recommendation of staff is 100% of the cost of both the consultant and the staff. But we wanted to give you the other choice if you chose to look at it and try to reduce the cost of building.
Right, we make a motion that we approve 100% coverage for the staff and contracted recovery.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. Call for the question.
Vera?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Vineyard?
Yes.
Creighton?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Motion passes. City council matters, city council discussion and possible action regarding placing Measure H on the 2018 ballot.
Ladies and gentlemen, I was the one that had initially brought this item forward. Tonight, I would like to just state that I would like to have some more background information provided by staff and bring this back at the next council meeting. However, for those that are here this evening, if there are anybody here in the audience that would like to speak to this, I will allow for that, but other than that, for any kind of action item tonight, we'll forego that until the next council meeting. So if there's anyone that came here this evening and would like to speak to this matter, please step forward to the podium and state your name.
Eric Lee, I'm the past chairman for the Measure H Oversight Committee. I'll try to make this short, because apparently you're going to be bringing this back anyway, so I can get into more detail. Briefly, I would just like to remind not only the council, but the people in Atwater, the importance of Measure H and what it's brought to the city. Currently, the police department is receiving about 93% of all Measure H monies. I realize there's some rancor going on in the community, even to this day, about a firetruck, but the firetruck is a very small portion of Measure H. The police are receiving the bulk of the monies, and they're using that to put personnel out on the street. They're also using it to buy equipment, training, and other necessities for keeping the people of Atwater safe. Measure H was effective in 2013- Measure H was effective in 2013 by 2/3rds vote of the people of Atwater, and I realize that there weren't a lot of votes that were cast, and it won by a very small margin, but the fact is, it still won. Its sun sets in 2023. Now, I realize that we're bringing this up now, and even though I feel it's extremely important for the city of Atwater, I do believe that we have time to talk about it and also time to look at the value that it brings to the citizens. I know there's been some comments about, you know, somewhat foolish to extend it, maybe reckless, and that's not true at all. Rarely do you get an opportunity to have a tax paid for, not only by your citizens, but also anybody buying products in the city. That's a really positive thing, because what it brings to us is the ability to control the spending of those tax dollars. It's not a general fund tax. It is utilized by the council to provide specific things for public safety, so everyone knows exactly where that money goes. There's no rubber stamping going on by that commission. They're diligent. I know there's a couple of them here tonight, and they can also tell you that the job they do is important, and they guard the money religiously. And besides, we don't make the decisions. We're just an overseeing board. The council does make the decisions where that money goes. Again, I think this is a very important thing, and I would like people to really look at what the ordinance says. It's online. It's very specific, and I think it's something that, yeah, we'll probably want to renew this. Whatever timeframe on that will be up to how it's put to the voters in 2023, but it is a very important ordinance, and I think this city wants to keep it on the books. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address this matter?
Keith Plasky, 1984, Sagewood Drive in Atwater. Last week, I wrote all you guys an email concerning Measure H, and I want to thank you for the quick responses I got from everybody. However, I will still be looking into how this money's being spent, and I will have further questions for all of you in the future, and I hope you give me that quick response back. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith, and thank you for your service to our community. Anyone else? Next time.
City council comments.
We have rapidly reached the end of a very long day here so far for all of us. Any case, Mr. Raymond?
I'll be quick. Just want to thank Gloria Perez and Love Atwater for the love of our downtown, and I want to thank Dan Hernandez for his salute to the veterans that had served from the local community here. It was nice to be out there and welcome home those veterans.
Mrs. Viera?
Yes, I want-- Dan, I was late, but I did get to see what you put on there at the high school, and it was beautiful, very tastefully done. Very proud of that. I want to give kind of a shout-out to our police department. I know they were faced with some very tough decisions made in our city over the last week. Thank you, Chief, for overseeing them and keeping them safe and making sure that they're trained and that all of our guys got out okay. It's never, ever easy what they have to do, and I sincerely feel for all officers involved. So my prayers to all of our first responders for safe nights and days. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Vineyard?
I'll echo both those first sentiments by Councilman Raymond and Councilwoman Viera. Also, we had fall cleanup this last weekend. I want to thank the Republic Services, the cadets, all the volunteers, any city workers that volunteered to help us out by switching their days. It turned out to be a little lighter than the fall within the spring, which was great. We moved it to a different location, but everyone seemed happy. Everything moved along pretty good. So I believe the spring one is in April? April 27th, I think, or somewhere around that. Also, the Christmas parade has been decided. It's going to be Friday, December 1st. It should start about the same time, I think, 7:00 o'clock, and they're talking of going down Winton Way, down Broadway, and ending at the Bloss House. So the Chamber of Commerce will be putting in a letter for our help. Okay. Again, I already said about the finance meeting being on the 13th. We've had some rain. I'd still like people to be a little more due diligence on their sprinklers when it's raining. Shut them off. You think it's going to rain, shut them off. Maybe reduce some of the time. We're still having quite a bit of flow into the streets and watering on the wrong days. So if in doubt, you can call the volunteers, Mr. Olzak or myself, and we can give you the proper days of watering at times and things. But let's still, you know, let's conserve until we make sure we have a good ground source of water.
Thank you. Mr. Creighton?
I too. Chief, good job out there. Thanks for watching out for the guys. I'm glad everybody made it home safe that day. Halloween's coming, so watch out for the little kids for trick-or-treating, and if you can, make it out to Hunter Farms. It's a beautiful venue they have right out here on SP. And thank you, everybody else, for the veterans deal you put on, Dan, over at the high school. It was wonderful. And I'd like to also bring back the three-day-a-week watering schedule.
Actually, that'll be coming back with the utility rate study.
Thank you.
Okay. As has been stated here, and I'm just kind of parroting it, but, you know, our cops really did just an unbelievable job here the other day, and anytime there's a loss of life, regardless where it is, we mourn for whoever has lost their life. And I am particularly glad that our officers are able to go home and be safe, but it just shows those inherent dangers that these guys have, and I thank the Lord that, you know, we have the caliber of officers that we have in our city to protect us. December 2nd, day after the Christmas parade, is our cops and fire for kids, and that'll be over at the Walmart parking lot, right out in front of Walmart out there. It's a big deal that we have out there each year. So come on out and bring a toy, bring your cash, and, you know, this is a fundraiser to give underprivileged kids the toys that they normally would not have on Christmas morning. So it's been a very successful program, and we'd like to see everyone out there to help participate in that. Yeah, and on the 14th, this past 14th, the Love Atwater folks, Gloria and crew, what they lacked in a lot of people out there, they made up for in spirit. I'll tell you, it was a great event in that regard, and I think with a little bit of, you know, more aggressive advertising and promotion, I think that would be a really great event to showcase our downtown area. This past weekend, both Saturday and Sunday, Stagestop Gun Shop had their grand opening, and if you haven't been in there and taken a look at that place, I encourage you to do that. Joey Viera has done an unbelievable job on that building out there. He's dumped a lot of cash into it, and it looks great. And boy, I'll tell you, there was a lot of people spending money in there that day. He had some very good deals. I dropped some money in there myself, and I'll tell you what, it's a great addition to our city. I think that they need to be commended on that. It's a great addition. For those that don't know, this past Tuesday, the LAFCO heard the application for annexation of the Ferrari project, and it was approved 100%. So the annexation is in place and moving forward for the Ferrari Ranch. So that was a big step in the future economics of Atwater. For those that have been trying to pull up the agenda for this particular meeting, anyway, our website, we've had some issues, shall we say, and that's why it wasn't there, this particular meeting, but in any case, it is being looked upon.
I don't think it'll happen again.
Okay. If you say so.
Talk to the administrator.
Okay. Well, in any case, apologize for not being able to provide that information in this meeting, but Mr. Bramble says that has been rectified, so I'll take him at his word. And we apologize for coming in late today. We've been in closed sessions since 3:00 this afternoon, and we're going right back to continue, so hopefully, you know, we'll have something to report out. But nonetheless, that's pretty much the end of it. Mr. Don, did you have--
Tyler have something? I do. Tonight is Kim Jennings, last night, as our recording secretary. She has served so faithfully and so wonderful. She's been wonderful to work with, and I just wanted to honor her from my office, that we are going to miss you, but thank you for your service.
Thank you, Kim. And I think it would be nice to know that taking her place will be Lisa Rasmussen, figure of the community here, so we'll see Lisa at next meeting. Okay. All right, I guess that's pretty much about it. And Mr. Hernandez? Yes? Yes, sir. Real quick. Real quick, come to the podium, let everybody see. Yes, sir? Great job. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much for your patience this evening. Thank you, everyone at home, for watching, and for all of you that came here to sit through it all. We appreciate it, and with that, meeting is adjourned. Go Blue!